It just made more sense to put all of these in one document so everyone can understand what the final product will look like. The only items that are on the agenda for tonight are specific to the motion and second for the ordinance that was put on the agenda a couple of meetings ago. And that related to the nonprofit status of an applicant, one, and then the requirement for insurance, two. So in doing this, I had to make a couple revisions to the ordinance, specifically section 7-503 under permits required. That section, which is on page two of your document, previously had sections A and sections B. It did not have section C. I added section C. Section C relates to the proof of insurance. I'll read that as I drafted it because the motion was that they be insured, but we didn't have a definition of what that was, and that's understandable. There's a lot that goes into that. So for proof of insurance, the section that I drafted was, "Proof of insurance sufficient to ensure the 501(c)(3) for the transport, storage, sale, and disposal of the maximum amount of fireworks intended to be transported into, stored in, sold in, or otherwise disposed of within the corporate limits of the City of Fairview must be provided to the city at the time of permit application, and said insurance is required to be in effect for the duration of any issued fireworks sales permit." Meaning, they're going to have to let it, they're going to, we're going to make sure they're adequately covered for their operations. There was a discussion about requiring a specific minimum. An example would be we require them to have a million-dollar policy. The reality for that is, we don't have that purview because they're not a partner with the city in any engaged activity, and they're not performing that activity on city property. In other words, the city's not an additional insured. Given the fact that they're not an additional insured, we can require insurance to cover their activities, but we can't define what that activity or coverage is. So with that, that's how I wrote it. They would provide our insurance policy, and it is what it is. We would just have to accept that they have that coverage. But we at least did spell, spell that out. So that was the easier part of, of the discussion. The more difficult part of the discussion is paragraph B above. As we discussed, the motion that became this ordinance was that they must be an, a nonprofit, registered nonprofit, in the City of Fairview, providing nonprofit activities or conducting nonprofit activities within the city limits of City of Fairview for City of Fairview residents. That's the part that becomes problematic, and that is the, the second half of this paragraph. And I'll, I'll read beginning in line two, line two, sentence two, as it relates after the period. "The City of Fairview shall issue no permit for the sale of fireworks unless the applicant has first provided documentation that it is a registered nonprofit organization and that it has provided proof of providing nonprofit community services to City of Fairview residents within the City of Fairview corporate limits." That's my interpretation of how the ordinance was worded. As I expressed to you in an email, there's a little bit of hurdle that we need to address. An example would be, a nonprofit comes to the city and says, "We perform nonprofit services. We're in this city, and we've given a scholarship to a Fairview, a Fairview High School student." If that Fairview High School student is not a resident of the City of Fairview, then that nonprofit, in fact, has not provided nonprofit services and provided them to a City of Fairview resident because the recipient of their efforts is a county resident and not a city resident. Very clear in what we discussed earlier. So for purposes of this discussion, we need to do one of two things. Identify within this document what qualifies as not-for-profit services so that when someone comes in and states, "We are a nonprofit and we provide these services," then the staff has a benchmark to measure by. It's open to interpretation at this point. The other opportunity would be to have applicants who are going to apply for fireworks make a application submission to the city. The city staff then present that to the BOC. The BOC consider whether or not the applicant meets the guideline as it's written in B, and then passes a resolution authorizing the issuance of the permit. But as, as it's written, there's no measure that determines what those services are, so we don't, it's up to interpretation to the staff, which I don't think is, is reasonable because anything open to interpretation is going to cause a problem. The other, the other option would be to, again, submit that application to the BOC. The BOC hear the applicant offer a resolution to approve or deny the permit, and then the staff approves the permit. We're indifferent. It doesn't matter to me which way that the BOC chooses to go, but we either have to identify specifically what qualifies, or have them apply to the BOC, and the BOC make the determination of what qualifies. Kind of open for discussion on that one. Again, we're, we're indifferent. Staff is indifferent. We just need some guidance on that.
Can we take out?
That is clearly the, clearly the board's discussion to...
Is it, would it be?
We, we just, we could do that. We just need an identification of what community services are. That's our, that's our, we could remove that, and if, if you didn't want to say City of Fairview residents, you just delete City of Fairview residents. And you could do that. We would still be left with the dilemma of what qualifies as a community service. So we would leave these as written, and the applications would go to the BOC for approval by resolution for the issuance of the permit, which we're fine with. Right? Which inherently creates the same issue for the staff. Because the staff would be in the same position as that. We're just not a legislated body. So, so as it's written, without any, without any, without any change to this, as it's written, we would, we would defer to the BOC. Because we would not have that guidance on there. So as, if this passes tonight as it's written, then when someone comes in and applies, we would submit that to the BOC, and the BOC make that decision or not. Right? So, right? I can try. I'd be glad to make a stab at it or see, see what's there, but beyond that, I don't, I don't, I don't know. Again, we don't, if, if that, if that's the discussion, and we're going to attempt to, to put that or figure out what that thing is. Obviously, discussions at the BOC level are one thing when we offer ordinances and all those sorts of things. Those are, those are obviously well-intentioned. When they get reduced to writing, then as, as we did this, you start getting into the thing, and okay, here's what we all discussed. It seemed appropriate during the discussion. Once you read it, all of a sudden, kind of, some blanks to be filled. So we're, we're good either way. I, I can attempt to come up with something. Or any of the other elected officials, they come up with something, kind of put that information out. Absent of that, this, the item you have on the agenda for tonight would not need to be heard tonight unless we can identify before 7:00 PM what, what that is. I have to speak into...
Also, not to interrupt, but if we could, just a reminder, if anyone to turn their microphone on if they're, if they're speaking, because I know we had some complaints at the last. You're welcome.
So, in essence, the idea was to provide local nonprofits with the ability to have a fundraiser. Because prior to that, there were no sales of fireworks in the City of Fairview. That's when it was proposed, that we allow the, our local nonprofits to do this as a fundraiser. So in theory, we don't want a nonprofit that doesn't provide any services to the people of Fairview to come in and sell fireworks and compete against a nonprofit that does.
The other problem was, last year, a nonprofit partnered with fireworks company, and that fireworks company got the permit in the nonprofit's name, and then they sold the deal. And so now, we don't want nonprofit, well, some don't want nonprofits to be able to do that any longer. So we're, we're making it, in my opinion, harder than it needs to be.
I did a little homework on the nonprofit situation last year, and it was the school system's athletic teams. And all the time that those fireworks tents were open, there were students there and coaches there. So they were manning those stations. They were doing their own work. It was not manned by outsourced employees. It was managed by school personnel, and that, I'm told the figure was $18,000.
Total, or per group?
Total. But it was manned by students, and, and coaches were on site. So I, I think it's, I think it's worth noting that it wasn't just an outside source that came to town.
Much better. So for purposes of this discussion and for tonight, is it safe to say that at the approval of the agenda, we would need to remove item 9(c) from the agenda?
I think so. I think we need to work on it. I'm not trying to, this wouldn't take effect until next year, anyway. So we've got a ton of work on it.
It would, it would take effect for the December sales period for New Year's. So yes, we do have some time.
Do we have anybody selling New Year's?
I don't, I don't remember if we did, but it would still be applicable. As of, as of now, this is written to be effective after July 7. So even if we were to make changes in the next two weeks and have it on the July 2 agenda, it would still be effective after that date. But we'll just need to, we need to do some work at, at some level on 503(b) code section to determine that.
So even looking just at definition, community services, providing services to others for no pay. That's basically the definition. So that's not necessarily a helpful enough either.
Sure.
To Tim's point, do we think that a nonprofit, I mean, do we just, like he said, just open it up to nonprofits? Do we really think that a nonprofit outside that doesn't do any community service in Fairview will necessarily pull a permit? I mean, we had, what, two, two or three permits pulled? We're not talking about like this influx of people trying to rush to Fairview to sell fireworks. I mean, we're talking about a handful of nonprofits. If we just say, forget all this stuff, and just say, "As long as you're a nonprofit, you can sell."
Commissioner, Commissioner Lewis, I think, I think if that was the preference, then we simply would have the item before you die and make no alterations to the current To answer your question, that, that would be, the purpose of, of section B specifically is related to the nonprofit discussion. So if that was the case, you simply would take no action. Now, you may want to take action on 503(c) regarding the insurance, but you would, but that would be your only item. So to answer your question, you would just stay silent on 503, amend only (c) as, as Again, that doesn't accomplish the goal of the discussion a couple of meetings ago.
Sure.
But that answers your question. Yes, sir. Again, for our purposes, because I know we have a lot to work through for tonight, we will remove item 9(c) from the consent agenda and replace that item on the July 2 BOC agenda and attempt to have that answered by that meeting. And thank you, I know, I know it seems a bit much for discussion, however, it's, it's become worthy of discussion for us to try and address whatever that is. It's just a, it's a difficult spot to, to make sure we get it right because the interpretation...
I don't have to go back to this again either.
So I want to go over to talk about, there's been some email back and forth about the comprehensive plan and what we're doing on the comprehensive plan and trying to make some things work and how rezonings and overlays and all those things. And as we get in through the summer into the fall, our intent is to have the comprehensive plan formally adopted. We've accepted it. It's a working document. It's something that we, everyone agreed to, makes sense, but accepting a document and employing that document are not the same. So as we get into the idea of the comprehensive plan, one of the bigger components of that is land use. So I want to take just a minute, and I'll give you some information, some follow-up to kind of walk through, but there are a couple of things that, that need to be considered. I'm going to focus really on commercial tonight, and I'll get some information out to you. Handout in just a moment, but procedural, as it relates to some of the things currently ongoing at the, at the planning commission level, the city, city goes, and I'm talking 30,000-foot level of some of these things. If a, if a subdivision, as an example, residential development comes in, they go through the process, they do the work, they typically submit two bonds or letters of credit. One is a performance bond. They agree that they're going to develop infrastructure in a subdivision that will ultimately be owned by the city. So their performance bond, that they provide the city states, "We will construct all of the infrastructure, roads, sidewalks, whatever's required, in a certain period of time." And they submit a bond to the city such that at the expiration of that time, if that work hasn't been done, the city can go cash in that bond, letter of credit, whatever it is, and complete that work. The purpose of it. The, and that, that's the standard everywhere. As construction projects go and things speed up or slow down, it's not uncommon for development to not be completed within the timeframe originally thought. An example would be a subdivision such as Sweetbrier. Sweetbrier's a subdivision right across from the Westwood Elementary School. Obviously, there's a second phase of that that's under construction now, but the first phase, you pull into the subdivision, it dead-ended, or you could take a ride and it dead-ended. There were about a dozen houses in that section. That phase of that subdivision started in 2005, actually 2004. Okay? Phase one was completed. The anticipation was that at some point, phase two will start, maybe phase three, whenever we get water, sewer, all those things. So what happened was, the developer, and I'm not knocking the developer, this is the process that we've had, the developer would go back and simply submit at the expiration of their performance bond, because they agreed to perform this work, they would, at the expiration of their performance bond or near it, simply provide the city another one-year performance bond. Yeah, we'll get to it whenever we get to it for, for these things, right? One year passes, two year passes, five years passes, 10 years passes. Every year, these performance bonds or letters of credit just come to the city, and the city just files them away and waits 12 months to see what happens next. In the meantime, you have residents who've lived in that community for now 10, 11, 12 years, and they can't even get their street resurfaced because technically, the city doesn't own the infrastructure, and the developer has been effectively granted this extension because the, the city has accepted their letter. So what I would like to do as a part of this, what we should do, is at the planning commission level, issue or authorize a bond or a letter of credit for a specific period of time. Typically, they run two to three years because subdivision development can take some time, right? And I don't think it's unreasonable for a developer to come in, depending on certain circumstances, and request an extension, typically a year. What's happened, though, is the developer, the development community in Fairview, over time, it's been accepted that when the clock runs out, just submit a new letter and the clock starts over. In the meantime, the residents who've bought in can't get the basic infrastructure improved that needs to be improved. So my suggestion, and we'll put this in writing, just so everyone understands, my suggestion is that through our zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations, the planning commission is authorized to issue or authorized to accept at the subdivision approval letter, bonds or letters of credit for a certain period of time. Let's call it three years. I'm not asking to identify a time right now, just a process, we can get into the time. So developer X comes in, I'm going to submit a bond that says, "This work will be done within three years," whatever the case is. The planning commission accepts that, that bond becomes en filed. If there is an extension to be issued, rather than the city simply accepting the new letter and therefore that letter becoming effective, the developer should have to go to the planning commission and request an extension and state the reasons why. The planning commission then be able to extend that bond one time for one defined period. At the expiration of that letter or bond, the city would either recall the bond or letter of credit and perform the work, or the petitioner would then have to come to the BOC rather than the planning commission and make that appeal. The reason why is ultimately, the city will own the infrastructure, and the city, in this case, the BOC, the BOC represents residents. The planning commission does not represent residents. That's not a knock on the planning commission. That's not a plus for the BOC. That's just how it works. So ultimately, what happens is, if these letters of credit exist, the homeowner or the resident effectively has no recourse because there's a document out there that really delays their recourse through its acceptance. So I think that if it's an infrastructure that's going to be owned by the city, and the city is going to be responsible to that resident or the shareholders in that area, then the BOC should make the decision whether or not to extend that on behalf of the existing residents, rather than a simple letter being submitted where they're never having an argument been made as to the justification for why the extension would be made. It seems to work better in, in that sense. So as we get into crafting these, we'll draft some language. This is not going to happen overnight. It will take a few weeks, but we'll craft some language to take to the BOC and the planning commission so everyone understands for, for new subdivisions, specifically residential, where the city is going to own the infrastructure, that there's a defined period of time for that bond or a letter of credit. There's a defined extension and justification for that. If that's exceeded, it goes to the BOC, and the BOC makes that decision. We'll also make those decisions, the petitioner will have to make their presentation to the planning commission or BOC, whichever applies, prior to 90 days before the termination of the bond or letter of credit. So if they're 120 days out and they know this is not going to work, they can apply to whatever board, make their appeal, and whatever board is, has the purview can make their decision. If they're after the 90 days, we're calling the bond, regardless if it's the first appeal, the second appeal, or the eighth appeal. If they fall within the, the final 90 days, because in reality, if the city calls in a bond, the city is under the obligation to do the work. We can't just bank the cash. So if there's been an expectation that that work's going to be done in 12 months, then if we're 90 days out, that should give the city the ability to at least recover the bond and bid the work, so the work can be bid in a timely manner. the bond and bid the work, so the work can be bid in a timely manner.
Appropriate that if, say, the planning commission. Come in and say, still work in progress, we're not done yet. Planning commission extends it for.
Right.
Would it be appropriate to increase the amount? The cost of doing that project has now increased. So to do that infrastructure with an X amount, plus whatever.
Theoretically, yes, and we would factor that in, in, as a, as a recommendation. As an example, if they've come in and done the work and they've not, and they've not installed the road bed, obviously, building road beds is a cost. Now, if they have installed the road bed and done some other things, we would need to deduct the work done and add the increased cost of the work not done and see where that falls.
Normally, our process has been so different. Reduction because they have done so much, but.
It, it just depends on what the cost of the remaining work need to be done at the time they, they make that. What, what they typically done, to your point, is come in and request reductions, but they've never come in and requested extensions. And that's where the, that's where the dilemma comes in. We'll do the math, we'll take into credit what has been done versus what needs to be done, up or down that number, um, so that we know the city would be made whole in the event they call the bond. What we'll likely do to get back to, to everyone is figure out whatever the remaining cost of the work is, times one and a quarter. So if it's a million dollars to do the work, we were going to require twenty-five percent over the estimated cost, million two fifty, cover the city. What we don't want to do is estimate it being a million dollars, collect a million dollar bond and it's a million two. So we'll figure out what the estimated cost is of the unperformed work, factor that times one point two five, that will be your bond value. And have them come in and request the extension, rather than request the reduction.
Don't come do that ninety days in advance, then we probably. Planning side.
The staff.
Twenty days out.
The staff will, behind the scenes, that nobody sees, the staff will already have that work done and identify what that cost is. So that, that will not be, that won't be a consideration for the planning commission or, or the B O C, all of that work will be done in advance, and our suggestion will be suggestion of cost plus for the remaining work, the work that's been incomplete.
What percentage we were tacking on?
There's no rhyme or reason to it. Historically, I mean, again, it's, it's, since I've been here, the only discussions have ever been, which, which does not have to be done, but these are the votes, the planning commission votes have been authorize the staff to call the bond in the event they don't bring us an extension. Well, in reality, we don't need approval to call the bond, we have an obligation to call the bond, and they have an obligation to request the extension. So we're just.
They really should never have been on the agenda for the.
Not at all, correct. So, and, and we, it's just, listen, as, as we've done some work and done some things, you know, first, we revised the police department, then we revised some financials, then we revised some public works, now, planning is up and we're just trying to work through those things, so, so. But yeah, so it will be a rever- a one hundred and eighty degree change from where we are. So, but it's the proper way to do it, because ultimately, the B O C is the group that's going to have to vote to accept infrastructure. And that's how it works. A subdivision's complete, someone comes in, this comes to the city, the petitioner says, we've completed this work, we go out, we inspect it, it's complete, the city at that point accepts the ownership of the infrastructure and requires a one year maintenance bond to ensure that their work doesn't fail for twelve months. So you have the performance bond, the agreement that they're going to do the work to the city's standards, and then the maintenance bond, that their work doesn't fail for a certain period of time. Reclamation bond, yes, but reclamation would be separate from, from where we, where we are. Um, now, in the event no work had been done, only dirt work, then, in that case, a reclamation bond would require, a reclamation bond is a bond that's submitted early on, and if there's dirt work or other things and that work stops, then you submit, you cash in the reclamation bond and you reclaim that property to its existing condition prior to any work at all being done. So, but for our purposes tonight, that, it would be the construction bond, performance bond for that, and then the maintenance bond for the cleanup of that. So as we get into that, just know if you see bonds and letters of credit that have historically been addressed by the planning commission, those will now be a component to be considered by the B O C, as, as they should be, as a part of acceptance. The B O C should really, if a subdivision comes before the planning commission and, and that's the way it goes, really, there should be a window of time where the city expects to take in that infrastructure. The reason that's important for us, in years past, there was little effort put into planning for our future. So as the city comes in, if we have a subdivision that's approved by the planning commission today, the city should expect that ten years later, we have to resurface those streets. So if that work continues, continues, delay, delay, then everything we planned for five, six, eight, ten years out now becomes off schedule. So we should look at that as, when these plant, when these subdivisions come in, what's our cost operationally, once we own it, and when will the next maintenance cost take place? So without that, we just, we're in a bit of a spot, so.
Separate issue.
Sure. So, so there's a lot to that, and we'll, we'll get into all that, but just know if you see that matter come before you, that's the purpose of it. Secondly, as it relates to um, the comprehensive plan, we're going to be looking at the land use component, and there are two, one's residential, one's commercial. I'll go briefly on the residential, the commercial's more going to be problematic for us. Residentially, let's take, there was an, there was an item on the planning commission agenda at the last meeting that was annexation and zoning of property behind Castleberry Farms. The vote in this matter doesn't matter, I'm just bringing that subdivision up as a discussion, not whether it was up or down. At the planning commission level, there was discussion about zoning. Specifically, do you use the new compre- the new proposed land use map that's, that's not been formally adopted, or do you use the old land use map that has been adopted? Well, then that, there are some caveats that we'll have to work through for the implementation of the new comprehensive, or the new land use plan. A simple discussion of that would be, the fact that the, there was a discussion of onsite sewer for the, the new developments that will be back up to, to Castleberry, right? The petitioner made a request for R S fifteen zoning, fifteen thousand square foot lots. The current subdivision is on R twenty, which is twenty thousand square foot lots. The difference in this case is that when Castleberry was built, the city owned its own sewer system. So everything done in the subdivision's unconventional sewer, right? That's how that goes. During that time, circa two thousand five, the city abandoned its sewer system. Right? It, it went away from discussions that took place between ninety-seven, ninety-eight and two thousand six, September thirteenth, two thousand six, if I'm not mistaken, I could be, but I think that's close. So with that, do you have the issue of taking into consideration the services and components provided by the city at the construction of one subdivision, as opposed to the lack of those same services, is the impact of that for future development? I'm not proposing one or the other, that doesn't matter. I'm just saying, as we get into the land use development as relates specifically to residential, we're going to have to consider what took place in the past as it relates to available conventional sewer, and what will take place moving forward, it was relates to unconventional or decentralized systems. Because the ability to develop property twenty years ago, under a certain set of standards, is not the same ability to develop like property or developments today because of the lack of that infra- infrastructure. So as we get into the land use component for residential, just know that a consideration of onsite sewer systems and other things, as it relates to that, will become important. And then the inclusion of P U Ds in, in all of those, in all those things. So um, residential will become very complicated very quickly, um, but it'll be complicated once. Once we fix it, it won't be difficult, but it will take some time to do.
Are you talking between now and when we fully implement the comprehensive plan? So.
What, what.
This case here, where we try to be consistent with all of the future or the, the past decisions, especially for the, the planning board, i- is that what you're speaking on?
My suggestion is going to be to adopt a land use plan first.
Okay.
Comprehensive plan, second.
Oh, okay.
The reason why is, the land use plan is a part, is a component of the comprehensive plan.
Right.
Uh, we'll get into the technical issues in just a minute on the land use plan, but adopting a, a comprehensive plan without formally adopting a land use plan puts those two documents in direct conflict with each other.
Sure.
It, it creates more problems than it fixes. So my suggestion for implementation is land use plan first, formal adoption of the comprehensive plan, second.
What are the timeframe for both of those? Um. We can get that to vote on.
But, let's talk about that after I get this, I don't know the answer to that, I'm going to, I'll tell you what my suggest, what my request is going to be to the B O C and to the planning commission, is for each body to assign a person, vote for representative for the comprehensive land, for the comprehensive plan implementation, and have someone from the B O C and someone from the planning commission meet regularly with staff so we can walk through some of the issues that are going to be found in, in adopting this. So with that, I'm going to pass around, and I, I know you guys get tired of me passing around documents, but it's easier for me to follow um, with this, and I've made several copies, if anyone, I'll, I'll put some out. If you would pass, pass these around and I'll put some out for everyone to follow. I, I think that's enough. Can I lay these out? So, let's, let's talk about commercial for a second, because it's an easier discussion to start with. Oftentimes, when we talk about commercial, what happens is, someone comes in, a petitioner, petitioner comes to the city, they go to planning commission meeting, and they want to rezone something commercial. Okay? I'm going to give you a, a simple example that I can put in my head, a visualization. Let's forget, let's forget planning or anything else for a second. Let's assume that we're going to go out to eat at McDonald's. Okay? Everything on the menu's five dollars, and everything on the menu exists as it exists today. Every breakfast item is on the menu, every dinner item is on the menu, every sandwich item is on the, on the menu. But we make the decision to go to McDonald's to dinner, and we are to eat, and we know that their policy is this. When we arrive at McDonald's, I can order off the breakfast menu, or I can order off the dinner menu. But it's McDonald's privilege to give me anything off the menu they choose. So if I order off the breakfast menu, I may get hotcakes and sausage, I may get a biscuit, but I agree, when I go there, I accept that those are, those are the choices, and they're going to give me any of those things. I give them five dollars, open the bag, and I can't complain, that's what I've gotten. I knew that when I got there. Same thing with the dinner menu. I pull up, I want the dinner menu, I give them five dollars, I go to the window, I may get a cheeseburger, I may get a fish sandwich, but I've accepted that when I get there, only, anything on the menu is what I'll accept, right? Let's take that same visualization and put that to our current commercial zoning ordinance. Typically, what happens is, someone brings something in and they want to rezone a property from whatever to commercial. The next question that is often asked, if not always asked, is, what are you going to put there? That's how it works, every time. The reality is, we've answered that question for them, just like McDonald's answered the question for us when we placed our five dollar order. Because under commercial general, every one of these things on the list qualifies. So if we go down the list, permitted uses, administrative services, community assembly, cultural and recreational facilities, educational facilities, essential public transportation, communication, utility, automotive parking, banking and financial services, convenience and retail, general business and communications, general retail, outdoor material and equipment sales and repair, professional services, medical, professional services, non-medical, restaurant, full service, restaurant, fast food, self-service storage, transient habitation, warehousing, goods, transport and storage, wholesale sales. You flip over to the next page, there are some unit, uses within that. Um, item B, childcare facilities, healthcare facilities, animal care and veterinary services. You get below that, within those, extensive impact facilities, intermediate impact facilities, religious facilities, special institutional care, um, special personal group facilities below that, automotive marine craft, entertainment amusement services, a general assembly below that, accessory storage, administrative office and private recreation facilities. All of those things qualify within the current commercial general. So what happens is, applicant X comes in and they decide they want to put a restaurant on their site. And at the time, people agree, well, we can put a restaurant on that site, it's fine, but what if they don't? What if they sell it and put something else? By our ordinance, we have agreed that they can put any one of those other thing else's on there. Just like when we went to McDonald's, we paid our five dollars, if we leave with a fish sandwich and we wanted a cheeseburger, we should have gone to Hardee's. Because we agreed when we got there that they can give us any one of those things and it's acceptable. So in an effort to clean that up and to help us with some of that, my suggestion is to break out our zoning. And this is an example only, this is not the zoning that I'm suggesting, so although it may be close. What I think we would do, would be better off to identify our zoning by use, or proposed use. So, as an example, we, we, we have currently commercial general zoning that applies, and there are places throughout the city that are already zoned commercial general. So commercial general, as it exists today, if you have a parcel that's commercial general, there's nothing the city can do right now, even if we were to go back and say, well, we want to rezone that to something else, we don't get to rezone property. Now, you could put some ordinance and things in place that says if there's no use for a certain period of time, twelve months, eighteen months, whatever, you have to come back and get these things. But for purposes of this discussion, what is commercial general today would be commercial general going forward, and everything that we just read off the list would apply. First bank closes today, they move locations, a fast food restaurant can go in there tomorrow. First bank closes today, and a wrecker service wants to be installed there, then by our current commercial general service, our current commercial general ordinance, wrecker service can be installed there. They meet the current commercial zoning, commercial general. My suggestion is to take what we have, or a, a document similar to what we have, and break those uses out. A simple suggestion, and then, I'm not suggesting that you pass this tonight, there's a lot of work that will have to go into this. But my suggestion is, break out our current zoning to like or similar uses, and have a petitioner come in and ask for a more defined zoning of commercial property. In this example, and this is example only, you would have C one, C two, C three, C four, and C five. So when someone comes in and they want to apply for a rezoning of a property, rather than commercial general, which everyone's up to interpretation, what they like or don't like based on what they've heard, the use is now defined. It's also defined in the event that the owner sells the property and their mind changes, we've still defined the use that's more palatable to what we expected to begin with. So under this, as an example, C one would be administrative services, community assembly, cultural recreational facilities, educational, banking and financial, insurance, et cetera, professional. professional services, non-medical, childcare facilities and healthcare facilities, religious facilities and administrative offices. Again, I'm not stating that I suggest you pass this tonight. This is an example of how you would bring down some of the uses. C2 would be essential public transportation, communication, automotive parking, outdoor material and equipment sales and repair, self-storage, warehousing, goods, transport and storage, wholesale sales, animal care, veterinary services, automotive and marine, marine craft sales, service and repair and accessory storage. We could re on and on and on, you can look over this, you get the idea. The purpose behind this is if someone comes in and says, and let's take the example of the property that you have a public hearing for tonight, the property on Highway 96. The petitioner brought that forth with the intended use of a restaurant. The discussion was, well, what happens if a restaurant doesn't go there? Under a system such as this, it would forevermore be a restaurant or something similar. So you would be adopting a use for that property going forward that would make sense. You no longer have to ask the question of what happens if a restaurant doesn't go there, but a wrecker service goes there. I'm not knocking wrecker service, but the uses are totally, totally different. So with this, we'll need to figure out what this looks like, but Commissioner Dawson, in answer to your question, I think it would be smart on behalf of the board and the Planning Commission to identify some smaller groupings for commercial property. We'll then look at the land use map and figure out what the city believes makes sense for each of the areas in the commercial zones, adopt that overlay and then have future petitioners come in, understanding that this is the city's vision for these areas and if they don't want to petition for one of those areas, they would have to explain why they think that's not the case. The flip side now is, under the current commercial, the city doesn't really have the ability to restrict or even ask the question for what's going there or what happens if. Because we, by our ordinance, have already effectively approved all of these uses upon rezoning to commercial general. So again, this is open for discussion, just thinking, but as we start talking about adopting the plan and adopting the work and putting these things in place, forever's a long time, the, the implementation fully of the comprehensive plan and the results of that plan may not be seen for decades. This is not something that we would approve over the summer and expect Fairview to look different next summer. We would approve this at the VOC meeting and hopefully sometime during our lifetime, we see the results of that, but we've set the table for that rather than the perpetual interpretation for, for how that works. So again, just purposes of discussion, I'll, or Planning Commission members or anyone else kinda, kinda think this through, but as we're, as we're talking about this, I think the rush to employ a land use plan without first considering the revised uses of our commercial and our residential will result in a failed land use plan. I think we have to consider on the residential side, where those are, what utilities are. I don't think we can effectively compare what was done for usage 10, 12, 15 years ago with uses for what may be done three, four, five, 15 years down the road specifically because of the excess of sewer. Yes?
Will that open up any more actual?
No, sir. And I can give you the technical reasons why, I mean, all those, short answers, no. It won't, what's happening at the wastewater treatment plant today, even through their improvements and upgrades are not gonna have an impact on this. If it does, it will be minor impact and even if there's a minor impact, it will be on limited area on the Highway 96 corridor specific to residential. Here, here's the, here's the unseen answer for that. The, the secondary problem to the wastewater treatment plant and is, as it exists today, is bringing it up to current standards. Bringing it up to current standards increases capacity by treatment. What it does not do is increase the system's ability to provide water needed to be treated to the plant. So you can treat better at the plant and if you're central or near the plant, your infrastructure there may be in such a way where you can add. But the ability for the system, the treatment plant is where it is. Let's say they get another 50,000 gallon capacity at the treatment plant every day. And let's say the only development that we have coming in would be a new phase next door to, to Castleberry. The issue's not the plant's ability to treat that capacity, the issue is the infrastructure's ability to get that to the treatment plant. So that, that's where we fall back into the decentralized systems and what happens to your zoning is a, is a requirement for land use to, to get there. So I see Mr. Anderson here, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's kinda where, where we are. The other, the other part that we have with that is the, our, our dilemma specifically here is the up and down hill terrain that, that you run into because mo, a lot of our system is high pressure. So when you pressurize systems, the ability to add capacity to the pressurized system is reduced compared to what can be treated at the end of the plant. The other issue that you have with that is if you have a pressurized system going uphill and that pressurized system fails and that system designed for pressure to send product one way up a hill, if that pressurized system fails, then I've reversed the flow and now what should be a pressurized system going one way is a gravity flow system going the other way. So for it, so that, that puts us there. So our future, for the next 10 years at least, maybe longer, is going to be the discussion of how do we consider decentralized systems within, within our area in absence of a larger centralized or decentralized system in the 840 corridor area. That will ultimately be where we are because that will be the need. So within that, we'll have to consider our commercial zonings and the types of those zonings as kinda discussed here, but then the residential component of how, how does that work? An example, go back to the other, and, and R20, if you take the same parcel of property, forget the acreage, forget it, that doesn't matter. If you take an, a property that would be preferred to be R20, but R20 doesn't work because of the need to use property for sewer, then you have a couple of options. You could make that parcel R15 and account for the sewer taking up the property because the density on the total property, the 100 acres, the 100 acres is no more dense with a larger number of R20 homes or a smaller number of R15 homes within that because property's taken up for sewer. An R20 PUD allows for property for lot sizes as small as 10,000 square feet. So in that case, if you approve an R20 PUD to accommodate for an on-site sewer, then you've effectively approved 10,000 square foot lots clustered rather than a standardized 15,000 square foot lots where you would still have the centralized system and then your clustered density within the subdivision can become problematic for traffic issues or other things. So the whole idea of getting too far ahead of ourselves to do this, I think is probably not wise on our part. I think we should take the time to invest in it and make sure that it's been fully vetted. I also understand as a part of this that because I said it doesn't make it so, I'm subject to make a mistake too, believe it or not. I'm, kinda bothers me that I'm capable of doing that, but I know that I am. So as we go through the process of this, I understand there are parts of these things I don't, I don't know as well, but I think we need to take time to fully invest those because the hope is in 2040, when the 24 comprehensive plan is exhausted, we can look back on it and see how we implemented it successfully, not another redo of another long-term plan. So I know there are a lot of moving parts of this. So my, my request would be that the VOC consider appointing someone to be the point person on the comprehensive plan, which includes all this. The Planning Commission appoints someone which becomes the, who becomes the point person of all this and then we take some time to thoroughly and vet, thoroughly vet what we need to get back out to both bodies for consideration. There, there is a little lot to it, a little lot to it. Longer answer to your question than you wanted, but it, it requires a long answer. Again, not something to, you have to decide at this table, but if we're gonna implement it and put the effort into it, then I think that's the best measured approach to ensure we, we do there. This, this is a copy of the, I can, I can email it to you. Yes?
Is that with the modifications that were put on with the grease?
It is not. I, I can send you both and attempt to do an overlay. Honestly, there's so, the documentation of that makes, makes them very difficult to read over the other, but we can get you comparative documents so you can, it's more, it's more easily read as comparative document than it is as an overlaying document. Thoughts, ideas on that from anybody, Planning Commission members at all, kinda thoughts Yeah, we, we'll have to figure out, solve the riddle of, really the discussion, the map, whatever it looks like, the bigger question or riddle will be, do you compromise land uses? When I say compromise, not in a negative way, do you reach compromises on land use with the understanding that most sewer will be decentralized? Or do you stick to a more preferred traditional land use map by making the investment to provide conventional sewer? That, that's really where you are in, in the thing. You're either gonna have to count for decentralized or provide centralized.
Well, that's what's gonna depend on.
I'm, no one can hear you, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I think some of it will depend on if there's a change in administrations on the federal level come November because of it, there is a change of administration, it probably will not be approved for a new.
Possibly.
I think that's kinda the, why they were trying to get it approved.
The, um, the difficulty with sewer treatment plants is not treatment. The, this, the discharge, the, it's the quantity of the discharge and we're, we're, we're very limited in adequate waterways that you can, you can provide discharge. Absent of waterways that can take on that discharge, you're gonna likely be decentralized of some sort. It's the way that it is. So with that, we had to figure out how, what, what is our role and what are, what is the city and are the residents, the community willing to accept with the understanding that those are limitations we have? Again, I think it comes down to, to the, the investment that the city would be willing to make through local infrastructure and forced infrastructure out to adequate facilities. The Dixon Water Authority wastewater treatment plant, which is 20 miles away from us, has substantial capacity. The cost is improving the infrastructure such that you can use it from, from Fairview and then the associated risk. You know, if I, if I have a, an untreated wastewater sewer line, every foot of that line is a risk because a storm come over, pull a tree up, there goes my sewer line. Construction, all those other things, they become more risk the longer they are. So we'll need to make a business model decision of some sort at the city level. At the same time, we consider the land use map and then make the determination that this makes the most sense for what we know today going forward. Absent of that plan, I don't, I don't think we're fully prepared to consider land use as an adoptable document. We, we just haven't gotten there yet. So, not that we can't, it's just gonna take, it's, now's the time to dig in, but it's going to take a substantial effort for that dig in. Once it's done, we're in good shape. Until then, bit problematic. Again, just because this is what I've said and what I've seen doesn't make it right. It just makes sense to me and I think we could work from, from where we are knowing some of this information to at least put together a usable document, but it will, it will take some effort and we'll get some people to come in and help. Obviously, water authority will be a part of this, engineering will be a part of this, traffic studies will be a part of this. There, there's all, you know, all those components that, that come to it. So, so one thing that we have talked about historically and I think probably not this year, but in the next year's budget, if we can do that, I think we need to perform a comprehensive, comprehensive traffic study for the city. Developments comes in, we typically do a traffic study for 300 feet at either end of the entrance of a subdivision, but that's not corridor traffic studies. I think we need to look at a traffic study that encompasses all of, all of the city to figure out where we, the city, see those things taking place. That also gives us the ability to enforce specifics of a land use plan, in particular residential. As an example, an idea of what, and this is, this is development kinda basics, but if you look at the area of Highway 100 between City Center Way and Buoy Lake Road, that's a pretty good example of how not to manage your ingress and egress for traffic. If we take that same model and we apply it to all of our corridors through streets and we look at, see what those look like and you look at available properties, then as we develop subdivisions, we can identify where we, the city, will allow entrances and exits to and from subdivisions. You can base that on adjacent properties. So if I'm looking at one property and there's potential that the property across the street is going to be developed, we should plan for a common intersection, not two competing intersections. Traffic use, traffic planning 101. Make sure that you're reducing those intersections so you look at vacants, you look at proposed, figure out what works and you let that be your design standard for how you, how you address that. In the future, I'm addressing one intersection as a city versus two intersections as a city. It also increases safety substantially. So again, bigger, bigger discussion than obviously we have tonight, bigger discussion we have for this year, but we're gonna have to get started on it. So I guess my question is just consider the appointment of someone to walk through this stuff, let that be our point person. I'll do the same with the Planning Commission and then we'll put a plan together to get back to everyone as a part of the whole broader implementation. With that, we, we'll finish this a couple minutes early unless anyone else has any, anything. With that, we'll finish this a couple minutes early unless anyone else has any thing.
One question.
Yes, sir.
I wonder if they're going to start construction on the intersection?
Cumberland Crowcut 100 intersection is scheduled to be complete by our contract with the state December 31, 2022. So, there will be no work in earnest on that subdivision until, or until that intersection, until likely the end of this calendar year. The reasoning behind that, we would have liked to start a little bit sooner to do that. However, the state is doing us a favor in that they are acquiring right-of-way and moving utilities for their sidewalk plan. Every utility they move, every piece of property they purchase to open up state right-of-way opens up our ability to spend more of our grant dollars on intersection improvements rather than property acquisition and utility relocation. So, in this case, we don't mind the delay because it will give us a better intersection for the same dollar. But right now, it's by contract, December 31, 2022.
So, in your experience, Scott, what is the estimated time that we're talking about to do our land use study, to do our comprehensive traffic study, and then to eventually vote in that comprehensive plan? It sounds like that's going to be the step that we try to follow.
You can, if you were to just plug into this and plow into it really hard, land use, six months, maybe eight months, depending on who all helps. Total comprehensive plan, if you're going to really, to get in there and do the thing, nine months to 12.
On top of the six?
No, in addition.
Okay, everything, okay.
But those are just the time, that's just the time that it takes. I also don't want to say that and have the expectation be out there or the understanding be out there that the city's had this comprehensive plan for 12 months now and are just now deciding to come around and do something with it. In fact, it's not true. One of the larger components of the comprehensive plan, one of the most vocal components of the comprehensive plan was the development of a city center, a town center. So, while you can't do all the components at one time, as we all know, I can report back to you that the city has made substantial strides in the component of what was the loudest request, which is a town center. We've obtained through a 10-year lease, a lease purchase agreement with our lease purchase contract with the property between the city and First Bank. And we've also outright purchased the property behind me next door to City Hall. Both of those two components took six months, but that's a forever decision that takes place. So, we will have that opportunity through ownership and opportunity for ownership. So, I wouldn't want to tell you six to nine to 12 months with the understanding that nothing's taken place since we've gotten there. In fact, the exact opposite is true. But you address what you can as you can, and now it's come time to address the others. If I were to ballpark that, you're probably in the $25,000 range. It's not overly expensive, but it does identify those corridors, particularly as it relates to residential traffic on your collector streets. Now, part of your traffic plan is out of our control, Highway 100, Highway 96, but as that, you can take your traffic plan and consider the proposed widenings or improvements to be made by the state. Your traffic plan, if someone comes in and you're doing a long-term traffic plan and you're looking at residential and commercial development on Highway 100, you have to consider two forms of that. One, if Highway 100 never changes, and one, if Highway 100 is five-lane in five years. The access and traffic plan for those things takes a whole different look as it exists today versus how it may exist then. So, part of that will be factoring in proposed change as well. Yes, so that's just a part of it. The bigger component of that is making sure, once you get that, making sure you can apply that traffic plan to residential development as it relates to the creation of new intersections. Accessibility of residential subdivisions becomes problematic when you have streets that aren't capable of handling multiple intersections. So, what you really need to do is look at all of your open properties, figure out what could develop, and then apply that at the planning stage through site plan approval and other things to make sure that you've managed your future traffic through your current site plan approvals, really where you're trying to go. Again, there's a lot to it, but we hope to get it right. We're going to make mistakes, that's okay. But we hope the mistakes are easily corrected through just some learning in the process. With that, we'll adjourn, work session, move some chairs, and get right into that. Commissioner Rainey, so you'll know, item nine, or the fireworks ordinance on the agenda for tonight has been removed from the agenda, will not be considered. That's item 9C. And thank you very much for your time on all this.
The staff is going to be the one to issue the permit, what to do versus the board?
They want us to define basically what a nonprofit definition of what they'll provide to the community.
And that's the definition.
So, when she or anybody else in the city tells them to approve it, they actually serve the community, yes or no? So, questions whether the board decides.
But do they serve cities in Fairview? Is that, who's deciding that? And what kind of services do they provide? See, that's the thing, is we don't know. I mean, and who's going to bet that? So, that's the question.
Absolutely. Exactly. We're catering to the community because they make those.
Well, maybe that's your thoughts.
So, it's going to look back on...
Happy, happy, happy.
How do I get to read tonight? Don't believe that.
Can if you want to. I've been doing them because I didn't think you wanted to, but I'll let you start now. Okay.
I have something, look here. Not one plane on there.
Your cup does not run us over.
Ms. Johnson, will you call the robe, please?
Present.
Present.
Commissioner Lucas.
Present.
Commissioner Vice Mayor Rainey.
Present.
Mayor Blade.
Present.
All present, mayor.
Good evening and welcome to the City of Fairview Board of Commissioners meeting. Tonight is Thursday, June 18, 2020, at 7:00 PM. If you'd please stand for the prayer and pledge. Most kind and gracious heavenly father, we thank you for this day and for all the many blessings you've given us. We gather to make decisions for our community. May we only use our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us and always act in accordance with what is best for our fellow community and our citizens. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Fourth item on the agenda is approval of the agenda, and we need to delete item 9C.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Burks, seconded by Commissioner Lucas. Is there any discussion?
I apologize, I have a question. I apologize for being late and not being caught up. Do we have on here the playground presentation, Brandy?
We do. Item 11E.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Burks.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas, sorry.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Mayor Blade.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item five, public hearings. Item 11A, resolution 13-20. Vice Mayor Rainey.
A resolution to annex certain territory upon the written consent of the owners and to incorporate the same within the boundaries of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, 7426 Horn Tavern Road. Owners, Thomas and Kristen Varden.
At this time, we will open the public hearing for item 11A. Is there anyone here to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing on item 11A and move to item six on the agenda, which is citizens' comments. None tonight, thank you, ma'am. Item seven, public announcements, awards, and recognitions. We have none. Item eight, staff comments and monthly reports, the city manager report. Mr. Collins.
Mayor, nothing for you to not accept for if the hopeful approval of the amended budget tonight, well, that will complete our budget work for this year. As soon as that's complete, we will work on getting the amended budget documents posted to the website and, of course, the new year budget documents posted for the website. As we discussed, we will also start with the July budget reports, which will come out in August. Those will be published on the website monthly along with the approved budget, so you'll have that information. So, just know that work is continuing. We look forward to getting that out as quickly as we get everything approved and set up where we can post it.
Thank you, sir. And we appreciate your hard work and all your information supplied to us in a timely fashion to get that taken care of. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Item nine, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Rainey, seconded by Commissioner Lucas. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Ms. Johnson.
Vice Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Burks.
Aye.
Mayor Blade.
Aye. Motion passes. Item 10, old business, we have none. Item 11, new business. A, resolution 13-20. Vice Mayor Rainey.
A resolution to annex certain territory upon written consent of the owners and to incorporate the same within the boundaries of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, 7426 Horn Tavern Road. Owners, Thomas and Kristen Varden. Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Ms. Johnson.
Vice Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Burks.
Aye.
Mayor Blade.
Aye. Motion passes. Item 11B, open board seats.
You have the list in your packet with the open seats and those who have expressed a desire to be reappointed.
For the planning commission, do we need to vote on these individually or can we make a motion to approve all?
Commissioner, they would need to be approved separately.
Make a motion to appoint, reappoint Brandon Butler to the planning commission?
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Lucas, properly seconded by Commissioner Burks. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Burks.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Mayor Blade.
Aye. Motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Butler. You are reappointed, sir.
Motion to reappoint Sam Kelly.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Burks, properly seconded by Commissioner Lucas to reassign Mr. Sam Kelly. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Burks.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Mayor Blade.
Aye. Motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Kelly. You are reappointed, sir.
Motion to reappoint Mike Anderson.
Second.
Have a motion to reappoint Mr. Mike Anderson by Commissioner Burks, seconded by Commissioner Lucas. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Burks.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Mayor Blade.
Aye. Motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Anderson. You are reappointed, sir.
I believe, is that all? Item 11C, resolution 16-20. Vice Mayor Rainey.
A resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of territory into the City of Fairview by owner consent and approving a plan of services, 7322 Valley Road. Owners, Richard L. and LaRonde S. Ray, 50.83 acres.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Lucas, seconded by Commissioner Dawson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Burks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Mayor Blade.
Aye. Motion passes. Item 11D, ordinance 2020-14. Vice Mayor Rainey.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning 5.9 acres of property located on Northwest Highway Williamson County Tax Map, 021, parcel 023.04, from RS40 Single Family Low Density Residential to CG Commercial General District, 7361 Northwest Highway.
Floor is open for discussion if there is any.
Is the owner here? Can we hear from him?
Mr. Everett, would you mind stepping up to the podium, please, sir? That's your name for the record, please.
Brian Everett.
Welcome, sir.
Is your microphone on?
I'm not sure. Is there a switch?
There's no, there's no switch?
He's working on turning it on.
Okay, thank you. Not really.
I can try to speak loud.
So, can you tell us why you're requesting this?
Yes, I'm hopeful that in the future I can take this house as a historic and part of the community of Fairview for so long and convert it into a restaurant where the community of Fairview can finally enjoy it and take part in it. community of Fairview can finally enjoy it and take part in it. That won't be immediate.
It won't be tomorrow?
It will be tomorrow.
That's all I have. So where, which house is it? Oh, the big yellow house?
No, white house.
I thought it was yellow.
Mayor, if I may.
You may, sir.
Part of the discussion at the planning commission about this item is that it is surrounded by residential. In essence, we're asking to put commercial property right in the middle of residential area. Another issue is the intersection of one hundred and old Northwest Highway. As you can see, that's a, that intersection's a weird forty-five degree, which could cause some issues there as well. I believe under the current land use map, that area is zoned, or it's a future growth area for commercial, general. The question is, do we want to start that right in the middle of a bunch of people's residential area? That's something we need to consider in making this vote, because that's what we're doing. And, and I understand our citizens here asking that and he says he wants to put it as a restaurant, which sounds interesting. But as we've discussed earlier in our workshop, it's commercial, general. It could be a whole host of things. Someone could come in and say, hey, I'll give you X amount, I want to buy it and I'm going to put in something else. And those something else is anything that's approved under commercial, general. Warehousing, wholesale sales, professional services, medical, non-medical, outdoor material and equipment, sales and repair. It could be automotive parking, it could be banking, it can be transient habitation, it can be self-service storage. It could be a whole host of things, the way our current commercial, general status ordinance is set up. So in essence, if we approve it, then we're allowing any of these items to potentially go there in the middle of this residential area. So, just some things you may want to consider.
Thank you, sir.
So the, the current land use, what about the future? So the future comprehensive plan, what is, what is that land?
I believe it's the same.
It is the same.
I don't think it's changed. It's currently RS forty. But I think the, under the land use map, it's, if I recall correctly, is commercial, general through there. The idea being that that would be a commercial corridor at some point. It's a question of how do we do that? Do we start in the middle and work out or do we start, start in, in that's already commercial and expand that through? Something everyone needs to think about.
And sir, you said that it probably wouldn't be right away that you would start developing this commercial property.
My plan is to work towards that. This is just the first step of being able to do that because that will build my goals.
Do you have an estimate when you, you may actually?
I would say two to three years.
Two to three years, okay. That's, that's great.
And if I may point out, it's okay, if you notice on the map, there's, there's two skinny plots, they're two and a half acres each to the left, another large plot to the right. Neither of those are filled by residents. There is no, there aren't dwellings on those properties at all. And then two lots down, we have, or three lots down, we also have a body shop, which is also a residential area. So I do see some commercial, commercialization happening along that highway. Hopefully it can continue.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I could add one thing, and I know the city hasn't seen this yet and I apologize, no, no one's seen this. We've had some discussions prior to this site coming up and I'm not asking you to let this influence any of your vote, but for informational purposes and for the property owners' information, the, as you're aware, we are working on some roadway capital, specifically some areas that we know have some more immediate concerns than others. One of those are Chester Road, a small section of Horn Tavern Road, and one of the areas that we're working on is this bridge, which is just as you're coming Northwest Highway, but you make the, you cross the bridge here, it makes a sharp turn and makes its way out to here, to ninety-six. One of the things that we have discussed internally as a part of a proposal to the Board of Commissioners for future use of that, and we expect to make this proposal to you at the same time we propose funding for Chester Road on bridge replacement, is that our hope is to propose something, or we will propose, we hope that we could bring to fruition a vacation of how, of Northwest Highway as it exists today. Our hope is that we would make an effort to obtain this parcel of property, move this bridge over to the edge of the property, straighten Northwest Highway from approximately the point where the corner is, down this property line and square that intersection to Highway ninety-six. So we have a squared intersection, more manageable than an offset intersection, less manageable. The difficult part of this intersection is if I'm here facing the left, I have very limited sight distance as I'm pulling out. We've discussed getting with the state to clear some of this, however, the, the sight distance at this spot is very difficult. This intersection is also very difficult to pull out because you can't look over your right shoulder as you see traffic, problematic both ways. So our effort is to replace the bridge here, actually move it here, straighten this road, vacate in some form this section of roadway and extend this driveway or allow this driveway to extend across city property to the, to the restructured Northwest Highway. So just know that regardless of what happens tonight, regardless of what happens on this parcel, we understand that in the long term, it's not going to make sense to replace the bridge on Northwest Highway without considering the reconfiguration of Northwest Highway as it intersects with Highway ninety-six.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
What's on the property behind, or at the bottom, the top, however we want to refer to, there, yes, what's there?
Ms. Rainey, that's a single family home, as, as is this. This parcel is a larger parcel, which is zoned, currently zoned residential, is a PUD, but will have to be revisited. But we understand the, this Northwest Highway, this section of Northwest Highway, our plan and our proposal to you is that when this bridge is replaced, that the current two-lane bridge be replaced with a three-lane bridge and enough right-of-way be acquired to at some point down the line widen Northwest Highway three lanes because of the use of this intersection. So we're trying to give it more of a long-term approach. So as it, as it sits today, it is what it is, but we hope that we would just simply allow an extension of this driveway across the city's right-of-way to intersect with Northwest Highway, which will become three lanes, at least from this point to this point with a new bridge.
Thank you.
Yes.
So if I understood correctly where the, I believe it was Varden's Body Shop, is that commercial or is that a PUD?
Varden's is commercial.
Okay.
So if...
So where, where was the PUD that you were talking about?
This entire property behind here. It's, it's far away.
Oh, okay. I see what you're saying.
Now, now, again, in discussing this, and, and again, projects come, come and go and there's some discussion long before, then the staff's planning of these, prior to any applications of anything, when we discussed the realignment of Highway ninety-six, specifically as it related to these parcels, or these parcels, specifically this, we would expect at some point, if this is done and the bridge needs to be replaced, that this intersection would provide for commercial development. Now obviously, there's a power company right-of-way, TDEC has that, I meant, Middle Tennessee Electric, you're not going to be able to anything under there, however, you can put road under there. So our, our suggestion as part of the long-range plan would be make this three-lane, vacate this right-of-way and make whoever develops this parcel for commercial or this parcel for commercial, we would be against accessing these from ninety-six, make them access, access that property from Northwest Highway. So if I was going to access this commercially, you would access Northwest Highway, turn into this property, turn out on the Northwest Highway and make your way to restrict the Northwest Highway access, the same as we would for this. So future proposal would be this parcel be annexed, be accessed from the, from the new Northwest Highway and not ninety-six, the same as this, to eliminate this cross-traffic on that parcel. Has no effect on your discussion of zoning, but it does have an effect on the city's future plan for accessibility for those sites.
And once again, so the, the, the future comprehensive plan, the thought is for commercial for that area or continue residential?
I, I, I think...
If you're looking this way, I couldn't tell.
I'm saying...
No.
Sorry.
No, sorry. For, I think the discussion by, by all standards, including Commissioner Burks, is that ultimately the ninety-six corridor in some fashion will become largely commercial. I, I don't, I don't think we can stop that. I think that that's the manner that it will go. The timing of that, suspect, I don't know. And I think Commissioner Burks' question of whether or not you quote-unquote "start" commercial development in an area such as this is a, is a discussion for the BOC. The, the long-range discussion by all, by all standards, as I understand it, is that this would, entire corridor at some point be commercial. The methodology, the timing of that is up for discussion, but the end result, I think, I don't think is up for discussion unless I'm missing something in, in that.
Mayor.
Ma'am.
So do you kind of have a plan of how you're going to make your restaurant? What will it look like?
Keeping the house just as it is, my plan of preserving that, that's really important to me. So that will be the main core of the restaurant. Do you have plans to build a large outdoor seating deck area down to the back? Just have some nice little pockets of areas where people can hang out and space out.
So your outdoor seating would be on the back where the residential home is now?
Yes, on the backside.
What was your last name again, sir? I'm sorry.
Last name was Everett.
Everett?
Yeah.
Mr. Everett, I, I tell you what my thought process is, and I, I'm not sure if you were here for the work session, but we talked about potentially looking at different zoning for commercial and for example, for that area, you know, zoning that as a restaurant commercial or whatever. I, I would feel much more comfortable if we had something in effect where we could say, yes, that's going to be a restaurant versus general commercial where at any time, if you decide to sell the property in ten days, they could stick anything there, especially with the residential. So I'm, I'm wondering, it looks like our timetable could be anywhere from six to nine months and getting that hopefully up and going where we can identify what type of commercial is wanting to, to go into there. So I, I don't know, I personally would feel better if we could say, you're right, we would like to see that restaurant there as well. We really like your plan. And then kind of shore that up a little bit to say, yeah, let, let's go with that versus now it's general, now we can stick anything there and we have a bunch of homes on either side of it and we stick something there that necessarily doesn't fit in.
Part of that is likely is probably my fault not knowing which category of commercial to request.
Right. I don't even think we have that, we don't have that ability yet. So hopefully within six months or so, we'll have that where, you know, you could come back and say, and I think it would be much more palatable for us to make that decision, at least for what I'm seeing.
Thank you, sir.
Two quick things. Number one, I drive by that house every day on my day to work and y'all have done a lot of work on that. So I love driving by it. I love that house, I really do. I think it's really, I'm jealous that you have it and I don't, because that wraparound porch, the whole, anyway. I agree though, I think this, this section will make great commercial. The thing that I'm teetering right now with is, is if your plan goes a little faster than you think, you have outdoor seating there, you have a residential house right there where that outdoor seating is going to be. Depending on how rowdy maybe your people get or something like that, we could have some issues there. For me, these things always just kind of come down to timing. I would love to say yes tonight, but right now I'm a little hesitant. I'd love to see you come back and see us in maybe nine months. I don't think it's out of the realm of possibility that the board would vote positively in favor of this. I think you got a favorable motion from the planning commission. Am I correct? Was that, was it favorable, if I read correctly?
It was in that it followed or met all the requirements.
Okay. So in, in piggybacking on what Commissioner Dawson said with us moving towards being able to label some of these commercial developments and exactly what's going to be there, that would be my recommendation is that you come back and see us. Once that's completed or in nine months or whatever the case may be, I would be hesitant to vote yes on it tonight. I like the idea for sure, but I would be hesitant tonight.
My concern also is the, the, the backdoor neighbor. I would like to hear from, give some of the people that live around there, some opportunity to get with us, to talk to us before we approve that because that is my only concern and I agree, the house is beautiful. So it sounds like a wonderful thought and a process.
If I'm not mistaken, if you voted yes tonight, then they would have a chance to have a public hearing to endorse the, is that correct?
For the rezoning, yes?
That, that is correct. The vote tonight is to vote to have a public hearing. Also, just as a point, and we do this on all of these, the property is currently posted rezoning and it's marked such that anyone with interest in that should call our planning department and schedule that. So anyone in the area, including the neighbor behind, would have, has, has seen the sign. It's on, it's, the sign is probably seventy-five feet from their driveway. So if there were an effort for the petitioner or the neighbor to see that, then they've been clearly duly noted by, by that. We, we have taken that as a part of our regulation.
So with this passes tonight, it's only to open it up so that people could come and talk to us about their desire to have or not have?
That's correct.
Okay.
The zoning got passed two weeks.
I can't hear you either.
Have to pass twice to, for the rezoning to be approved.
Thank you.
The, the matter for you tonight is simply authorizing a public hearing?
Any further discussion? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Lucas, properly seconded by Commissioner Burks. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Burks.
Nay.
Commissioner Dawson.
Nay.
Vice Mayor Rainey.
Nay.
Mayor Blade.
Nay.
Motion fails. Item eleven E, playground committee update. Mr. McCoy. Welcome, sir.
Good evening. Is this, it's not working out?
It's not, sir. No, sir. Just...
So I just wanted to come in, good evening, mayor, vice mayor, commissioners, and give a quick update on kind of what we've done, the progress and the kind of immediate calendar we're looking at for the underground rebuild committee. October sixteenth was our first, was our fifth. October 16th was our first, it was our kickoff meeting. For the next 18 days, we had four meetings, October 16th through December 11th, which included two meetings with vendor presentations, one day of playground tours. We toured about nine or 10 playgrounds in the Middle Tennessee area. And then also had a presentation and discussion for landscape architect, natural playground. 10:15, 20, depending on that meeting. For these four design meetings, there's normally a group of seven, four people have been through all the meetings, plus occasionally we'll have a couple of people attend. The approximate budget that we're looking at now across these is budgeted currently at $600,000. We are looking at, in some of the discussions we had earlier this week, are how we can slice and dice that to ease that financial burden. Some ideas are what can community contributors knock off the price? Vencing, for example, things that aren't... Don't require specialized knowledge or tools to put in. Other things are phased approaches. So maybe there's some equipment or some surfacing or something else that we can do that we can drop in that first piece and let people start playing. Continue to raise funds for ingredients to try to compress that timeline for fundraising. So I would expect when we present this in that package, we'll have a couple of slice-and-dice recommendations to look at and see what people will think about. The project plan would include that, those phasings. It would have the install cost, phase options for cost management, the plan layout, renderings of that finished product, maintenance plan and costs for the lifetime of the playground. Some vendors have some included maintenance for the first five years, others don't, but we would extend that up to 20 years to not only show what are the costs, but all the different tasks that are involved. Some tasks are general labor that could be done by volunteers or park builders or specialized inspector labor, but you'll be able to see that full picture of the life cycle. Instruction timeline from the time we say go. And then we'll talk about fundraising goals, fundraising timeline. We'll have some ideas there. Speaking of fundraising, the rebuild funds collected at Dust Car, I think as of this week, we've got $21,400. And that's from a variety of sources, including Park in the Park, individual donations, some other local fundraising events that have gone on. But I expect to see that fundraising activity accelerate once we can show a prediction. This is not just a playground, it's this playground. It also gives us the option to start sponsoring, self-sponsorships for equipment, fencing sections, brick placement, things that now you can visualize and see what that equipment is that you would be sponsoring. Some general ideas on the fundraising. There's another fork in the park, we've talked about car show. I have feature sponsors on the playground itself, corporate donations, citizen fundraisers, and grant exploration. What will happen if this is approved and we say, okay, we like the design, we understand what's going to happen, all of the focus that we've had on the design and selection will shift over purely to fundraising goals. That's where that financial would be spent. So that's kind of the update of where we've been, the timeline of what's coming, and kind of what some of the expectations you can see in that proposal. So it's just a general update at this point, and if there's any general questions, I'll try to answer the best I can, but the details will come probably in the next six to 10 days.
Does anyone have questions for Mr. McCoy?
No questions. Mr. McCoy, just super excited. Any kind of progress, any discussion about it? I know that the citizens are super...
Excited, yes.
Yeah.
The proposals y'all were looking at, was it to fit inside the current footprint?
It was based on the footprint that's there now. And so everybody that's... Some vendors have come out, some that were already familiar with that site. But it's been laid out for the footprint that is currently in place.
Okay. And I know the fundraising hasn't really started in full force, but I know one issue we need to think about going forward is that there's going to be some problems with probably corporate donations the next year or two. I know it's... We're... A lot of people were thinking we could look towards, but that may be problematic with things that have gone on.
That's correct. Financial burdens for everyone, looking for corporate donors. And that's why we've entered into discussions on how to phase it, are the things that we do to phase it so that we can get some immediate use out of that project without waiting for a, you know, determined amount of time to raise what we need for the full product. But also have a redesign so we can drop that second section into that map instead of the ones up there.
I like that idea. Thank you for thinking outside the box and taking some of these things into consideration.
Any other questions for Mr. McCoy?
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. We appreciate you serving on the committee and leading it so well. Thank you so much. Item 12, Communication for the Mayor and Commissioners. Commissioner Burks?
All I have tonight is just want to thank all of our Planning Commission members who are willing to step up and refill their seats. It's not the most fun thing in the world to do, come up and look at some of these plans and deal with some of these issues. Also, I'd like to thank my fellow Board of Commissioners. What we do is not very fun either, normally. No one likes telling somebody no. Sometimes the discussions get a little heated and such, but I appreciate each and every one of you, and I respect each and every one of you, even though sometimes we have differences of opinion. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Dawson?
Yeah, tonight, I want to thank our... Our City of Fairview Police Department. I want to thank Chief Zach Humphries. I want to thank all of the officers for the job that they do. I want to thank them for protecting me and my family every night. This is a difficult time throughout the country, but I want them to know that they certainly have my support, and I appreciate everything they do every day.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lucas?
Nothing tonight, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Rainey?
Nothing tonight. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Nothing from me at this time. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, moved.